Good evening and welcome to September 16th, 2025, meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice in meetings provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. The date, time, and location meeting will include in the annual meeting schedule. Post on the public bulletin board in this building and file notes to the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website, attached to the meeting notice posted in News and Announcement section. During the meeting, announcement made prior to the two public comment periods. Excuse me. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon, and anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance, in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniel's Law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Mr. Barant.
Here.
Mrs. Parati.
Here.
Mr. Schroder.
Here.
Mrs. Toley.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Please rise for the flag salute.
(Inaudible) United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Sorry. Be it that last week was the 24th anniversary of September 11th. I just thought it's right if we have a moment of silence for those who've lost their lives September 11th and those who've lost their lives serving on that day. First on the agenda, we have our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon, and if you're with us telephonically, press star nine.
I think it should be on.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Justin Dinowitz. I am here to the town. I just opened up a pediatric dental practice right up Eagle. Sorry, Justin Dinowitz, 556 Eagle Rock Avenue, Suite 109. So I just opened up a pediatric dental practice right up the road on Eagle Rock Avenue called Enchanted Pediatric Smiles. So we specialize in pediatric dentistry as well as dentistry to patients with special needs. So we're here to serve the community in a fun and engaging way. My wife Meredith and I, we're both big Disney people, so we try to create that fun environment when you step into our office. So we look forward to serving the community. We want to thank everybody for welcoming us to the community. And also with that being said, I wanted to invite the council and formally invite the mayor, even though I invited him through David Botham, but formally invite you all to the ribbon cutting ceremony on October 11th. We're going to be doing like an open house from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. that day, and then we aim to do the ribbon cutting around 12:30 p.m. So we look forward to officially being welcomed to the township. And that is that. Thank you again for hearing me out tonight, and thank you all for your service to township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Roseland.
You want the dantix too, or no?
You don't want me to do anything. I stick to the dentistry part. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. John Mathias, Office of Emergency Management. I'd just like to bring the council up to date that our emergency operations plan for the Borough of Roseland is completed and approved by both the county and the state police. So that's good for another two years. So in every two years, it gets updated. Secondly, I'd like to just bring up that it was a while ago, of course, with the accident we had in town with our police officer, but I would just like to recognize one other person for help he did. Even after the scenes, after the time with the accident, where the scene has to be safe, I called upon Mike Bottinger to come out with barricades and equipment to make the scene safe so it could be investigated properly, and I just wanted him recognized for what he did. I think he did a great job. He came right out as soon as I called him. I was tied up on a family event, so I wasn't around, and he came out and took care of it for me. And third, the pedestrian electronic crossing signs. It's moving along. It's been a long, slow process, but they were approved, the permits were approved by the county, so I can go forward to have them installed. Took a while to get the permits and different things like that. Secondly, the purchase order, I'm just waiting on that right now. I guess Maureen could tell you more about when that may be coming, but as soon as I get it, it'll take probably four to six weeks to order them. And then I've worked it out with Superintendent Critcher to save us a lot of money, and he's going to install them with his guys, which they did the other ones, they did a great job. So that's where it stands right now. Just as soon as I get it, I'll order them the next day or that day, and like I say, four to six weeks they'll deliver. So that's it.
John, a lot of changes to the emergency plan from two years ago, or?
Not a lot. There's some, but as time goes on, each year, I look at it and update it as we go. So when it does get submitted, it moves along pretty quick then to get it approved. So it's all done.
Quick question. Can you just go through where this set of signs are going to go this time so everybody's aware?
We're going to put two right out here on Harrison Avenue for people crossing over from Borough Hall side to Old Borough Hall side. And we're going to put four, there has to be four, on by Freeman Street, Eagle Rock, because there's two crosswalks there, and by law, you have to have for each crosswalk a pedestrian sign. But when you push one button, they all go off. So it works really nice. And it's great because with the improvements we have back here, I see more and more pedestrian and bicycle traffic coming this way, and a lot of kids and families crossing over. So as soon as I can get them in, Chris will work with me and we'll get them done.
Thank you.
Thank you for that plan. That's no small undertaking.
No, it takes them a long time.
There's a coordinator's meeting Thursday, right?
Yes, there is. I'll be there.
Thanks, John. I know it's a lot of work.
It's a lot to coordinate.
I know. I know. I've seen the book.
All right. If no one else wishes to be heard, I'm sorry. It's okay.
I just wanted to spend a minute, Janitrine on 38 Leonard. Just wanted to spend a minute talking about that horrific accident that took place at the end of June. And as you all know, at the heart of that crash was a speeding bus. And my concern is and has always been enforcement. Since that accident, what have we done to slow down Roseland? Why didn't we roll out an anti-speeding campaign in July? We could have called it the Mark Miller Initiative and sent a message to the whole world that Roseland will not allow that kind of accident to ever occur in this town again. This town needs to get serious about speeding. We need to focus on the basics of public safety, and we need to do better enforcement. Earlier this year, I think it was back in January, there was a big puff piece in This Week in Roseland about the acquisition of LiDAR guns, which were touted as the state-of-the-art speeding detectors. The article featured a picture of Officer Romeo, who was recently assigned to a speeding enforcement detail. So where are the LiDAR guns now? We have two guns worth several thousand dollars sitting on a shelf in police headquarters. The two guns are available on each shift, which means they could be signed out four times a day. In the month of July, for example, they could have been signed out 124 times. Does anyone want to guess how many times they were actually signed out? Fifteen times in 31 days by the same handful of officers. I requested a copy of the sign-in, sign-out log for the LiDAR guns, and I requested for July, but because it's a continuous list, I got everything from June 7th to August 4th. Maybe you'll recognize the names. Marada, Russell, Nicholson, Russell, Lupo Hughes, Metesic, Metesic, Marada, Nicholson, Gonzalez, Gonzalez, Lupo, Lupo, Marada, Marada, Lupo, Gonzalez, Nicholson, Marada, Gonzalez, Gonzalez, Lupo, Hesselberg, Hesselberg, Lupo, Hesselberg, Russell, 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 Metesic, Hesselberg. Where's everybody else? Our police department now is in worse shape than it was last year. This year, we have a director and two lieutenants. Last year, we had a director, a deputy director, and three lieutenants. And last year, we were in worse shape than we were three years ago, when we actually had a captain slash OIC. And three years ago, we were in worse shape than we were five years ago, when we had a chief. We have gone steadily downhill in spite of the fact that we are experiencing population growth. We are not prepared for the number of people that are getting ready to move into this town. So what's going on? We are the only department in Essex County with neither a captain nor a chief. You dangle the promise of a promotion like a carrot on a stick in front of those lieutenants. That's not motivation, Major Spango. That's manipulation. You're making fools out of both men and undermining their positions with their subordinates. We need to make a captain. We cannot linger in limbo without any command staff. You have two lieutenants. We need more. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. If you want.
Thank you, Mrs. Tremont. I appreciate the information that you've given us, and I will, a couple of things I'd like to address, just so you know, I'm going to make sure that those officers, I know those officers' names that you read off, they're certified on that LiDAR gun. My question is going to be now to find out if all the other officers are trained on the guns, because to use the guns, you need to be trained. So thank you very much. I'm going to find out if all the officers on the department are trained to use those guns.
Mrs. Parati, you're going to be stepped. These were prior to January. It's been nine months.
No, I.
You have seven officers.
I do realize that, but the training, by what I understood, the training doesn't happen all that often, and they have to bring, unless somebody's trained here that can retrain our officers, like if one of our officers comes in as a trainer, they can then train our officers. But I am going to find, I am going to find out to see if they are.
And then I'm going to say something to you. Look at the picture.
No.
Look at the picture. That's all I'm saying.
I totally, I appreciate it, and for me, I'm going to find that out. I do know that this, and I have to do it from, I guess it's from July, from August to September because of the way the rolling counts go. I do know that 169 summonses were issued this month, I'm going to say this month. I do, I cannot tell you, I have asked for, and they haven't gotten back to me, I have asked for a breakdown of what those summonses were, so hopefully next meeting, I'll be able to address that. I'm hoping that most of them were for speeding, but I am going to ask, I am going to ask that question because I do have that information, and I'm going to find out.
I can tell you from the month of July, there were 104违禁 violations, zero grid warnings for speeding, and zero tickets for speeding. And I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I'm talking August.
I have everything going back to September of '24, but given what happened in June, I would have expected the department to be on heightened alert. I would have expected a stronger response in terms of speeding, and as Mr. Barant has said on more occasions, you know, you could stand at the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and Roseland Avenue and just count the cars that are speeding by. You can put a car at the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and Livingston Avenue and just count the number of cars that may be illegal right on red. You could put a car at the end of Davenport, not Davenport, Fernwood, and count all the cars that run through the stop sign on Davenport and speed up Fernwood in the morning. It's out of control.
No, I am.
Enforcement. And let me just.
I am going to address it again.
Saying that I have never, never criticized the police with the way they respond to events. You know as well as I do, I've been there many, many times praising them for the way they respond, but there's a serious, serious lack of enforcement, and quite frankly, I blame that on the leadership, because there's no accountability because there's no supervision, and there's no supervision because there is no leadership. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to be heard? If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. Telephonically, star nine. Thank you, Neil Orion, I'm not sure who that was. Next, we have appointments to our Municipal Youth Guidance Subcommittee. There's three additions to the ones that are listed. Angela, correct? Solento?
Angel.
Excuse me, Angel Solento, Maria Bata, and Melissa Martino. I'll get you those names, Jock.
Excuse me.
Three names that are being added to the Municipal Youth Guidance appointments. Angel Solento, I have them written down. Maria Bata, I'll read it again, and Melissa Martino, I'll give them to you after the meeting. With those, with those three additions, do we have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have Ordinance 33-2025. For introduction, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland to repeal ordinance number 24-2025 as amended, which provided for salaries and compensation to be paid to non-union employees of the Borough of Roseland, and substitute therefore salaries and compensation for the year 2025.
Does a motion, do we have a motion to introduce ordinance 33-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barant, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 33-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025.
Thank you. Next is an ordinance for introduction, ordinance 34-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
A bond ordinance providing for 2025, 2026 road improvements in and by the Borough of Roseland and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $620,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $589,000 of bonds or notes to the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 34-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Toley, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 34-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025.
Next on the agenda is ordinance 35-2025. For introduction, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section 14-4 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to amend fees for the Tier One nonprofit athletic groups.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 35-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 35-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinance 36-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section 2-53 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Municipal Alliance Committee to change the month for the reorganization meeting of the Municipal Youth Guidance Subcommittee from January to July.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 35-2025?
So moved.
Thirty-six, excuse me.
Either way.
Thirty-six-2025.
Second.
Trillo, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 36-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinance 37-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for the property located at 7 Becker Farm Road and also identified as Block 30.01, Lot 13 on the official tax map of the Borough of Roseland.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance 37-2025?
So moved. Second.
Parati, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number 37-2025 will be posted on the Borough's website. Excuse me, notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just note, this is an ordinance that'll get referred to the planning board, so assuming the planning board votes in time, it'll be on for the 21st.
Okay, so it should be, the public hearing should be moved to November?
No, we're hoping the planning board's meeting, I believe, is the night before, so the hope is that it'll be.
Provided they hear it.
The 21st, but I just want to make sure it's acknowledged that it is subject to the planning board's return.
Okay.
Given you a lot of work tonight, John.
Thank you.
So noted. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 26-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance by the mayor and council amending the Borough of Roseland Code of Ordinances to repeal chapter 22, to adopt a new chapter 22, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, floodplain manager, and providing for severability and an effective date.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 26-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 26-2025? Hearing and seeing none. May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a motion.
Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance by the mayor and council amending the Borough of Roseland Code of Ordinances to repeal chapter 22, to adopt a new chapter 22, to adopt floodplain, excuse me, flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, floodplain manager, and providing for severability and an effective date.
A motion to adopt ordinance 26-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Barant, Toley, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is a public hearing on ordinance 27-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend section 10-2 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Certificate of Occupancy to remove the requirement for fire extinguishers to be installed in one and two-family dwellings in accordance with New Jersey State Statute.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 27-2025?
Motion. I'm going to jump ahead. Motion.
Second.
Parati, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 27-2025? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend section 10-2 of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Certificate of Occupancy to remove the requirement for fire extinguishers to be installed in one and two-family dwellings in accordance with New Jersey State Statute.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 27-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Parati, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 27-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on ordinance 28-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of water meters and related equipment for the Water Sewer Utility in and by the Borough of Roseland and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $400,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $400,000 bonds or notes to the Borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 28-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 28-2025? Hearing and seeing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second.
Parati, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of water meters and related equipment for the Water Sewer Utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $400,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $400,000 bonds or notes to the Borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 28-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Barant, Trillo, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number 28-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 29-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment in and by the Borough of Roseland and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $105,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $76,000 bonds or notes to the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 29-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 29-2025? Hearing and seeing none. May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, I believe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment in and by the Borough of Roseland and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $105,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $76,000 bonds or notes to the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 29-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 29-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 30-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the Water Sewer Utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $2,467,600 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,467,600 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 30-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Barant, Schroeder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 30-2025? Thank you, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bless.
Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the Water Sewer Utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $2,467,600 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,467,600 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 30-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Barant, Toley, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 30-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect 20 days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 31-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 14, entitled Parks and Recreation, to amend the outfield banner sponsor fee.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 31-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 31-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to amend the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Roseland, Chapter 14, entitled Parks and Recreation, to amend the outfield banner sponsor fee.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 31-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 31-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 32-2025. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Borough Code to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-24.2, Composition of Police Department.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Parati, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance 32-2025?
Janet Tremont, 38, Leonard Terrace, what is the purpose of this ordinance?
To increase the ability to hire another officer.
Right.
To... Officer Miller being hurt, he needs to remain in our table of organization. But it represents a vacancy within the department, even though he still has to be carried because he's injured on duty.
Okay, I understand that part. I guess the real question is why... This is the second time this year that it's been amended, and I understand the reason it's been amended. But what I don't understand is why, why we're limiting it to 17? Why isn't it 20, so that next year if we need to hire more officers, we don't have to wait for the ordinance to be amended? I think, don't we do it for budgetary reasons? We can only, if I'm not mistaken, we'd, I thought we had to, whatever our budget fits, that's what our TO for officers is.
We would budget for the number of officers.
Right. We, so if we, if there were 20 in that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there were 20 on that TO, we would have to budget for 20, even though we didn't have 20. So that would be taking money out of our, our budget, for like this year. So if we decide to hire three officers next year, we're going to have to adjust the TO because now we've budgeted for those additional officers. But if you, if you don't have them in the TO, you can't budget for them. And if you can't budget for them, you can't hire them. Right, but if, but if we have them in the TO... Right. And we have to budget for them at that minute, at that time.
Councilwoman Parati and I actually had a conversation about increasing it for next year, 10 minutes before this meeting. So we would have to come up with our budget, they would be in the budget for next year. We would change our ordinance way before they would be hired, when the budget's passed in April.
Right.
They would become budgeted and vacant at that time when we could hire.
So when you budget for them, would you budget for a portion of the year, or do you budget for the full year?
We try to budget for the whole year because it creates slippage in the budget also, which gives us latitude later on if there's more hiring.
That's a lot of latitude if, if the budget doesn't get approved until April, no?
No, it's about, if there are $60,000 employees?
Yeah.
It's about $10,000 a month, which gives about $80,000.
That's less than I thought. And then my other question, which I've asked before, going back to December of '23, why after 19 years do we still show six civilian dispatchers? The police department may employ, so how, how does that work? In terms of what you're telling me about budgeting and having positions in the TO, and you can't have them in the TO unless you have them in the budget, what does the police department may employ no more than six civilian dispatchers mean? Does that mean we can employ them?
They're not in our personnel summary, and they're not budgeted for, they're not listed on our personnel summary.
Then why don't we take them out of this ordinance? They've been gone for 18, 19 years.
Fair point.
Yep.
It's semantic.
I'm sorry?
It's semantics, doesn't have any impact on anything.
Well, if it doesn't mean anything, then take it out. If you don't need it, it shouldn't be there.
Huh.
And then the other question, and I missed this, I guess, in February, but I noticed that you eliminated the detective captain out of the DB. What was the rationale for that?
The detective captain?
Yeah.
Because the composition of Detective Bureau changed.
Well, you changed it by eliminating the detective captain, what I'm asking is, why, why was that eliminated?
There doesn't need to be two officers in there.
Why was that, I'm sorry?
Why was that eliminated? In the previous TO, you had detective captain, detective sergeant, and detective. And now it's detective sergeant and two detectives, correct?
To reflect what the organization looks like.
But you don't have a second detective in there. Yes, we do, as of today, we do. As of today, there's a second. Please tell me that you took the officer who was a former Newark police detective and put him in the Detective Bureau. We, I don't, I don't know what his. Who lives, who lives, incidentally, in, in Belleville, so that his response time could be 10, 15 minutes, instead of somebody that lives 40, 50, 60 miles away. It's personnel, so I can't say, I can't say, but there was a detective put into the position, I was notified today. We knew, we knew that they were being interviewed, but they were just put in today. And have they been informed? I believe so, I think Maureen was informed today as well. Yeah, I think it, yeah. Well, if they've been informed, why can't the name be shared? Because it's personnel, right, and they haven't been raised? You just made an appointment, though, to the police department.
We don't make that appointment.
We don't, that's not us, it's a day-to-day operation, we don't, we don't do that. But you approved it?
No.
No. It's not something that the council approves, it's considered a. You can't say who it is even though the person knows who it is and the appointment was made, by whatever appointing authority points the detective. I don't know, I'd have to.
I don't know what the process is, I don't know if he was appointed, knows he was appointed, doesn't know, I don't know anything about.
I was notified who it was going to be, I don't know if he knows.
I was also just notified.
Of who it was going to be, we don't know.
September 29th, the person who will be announced.
Okay, and will he be going through a 90-day probationary period, is that the?
That's what the, that's what the.
Usually.
Or, Department is.
Yeah, yes. Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on ordinance 32-2025? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Borough Code to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-24.2, Composition of Police Department.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 32-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance 32-2025 will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 325-2025, approving the September 10th bill list. Everyone received the bill list. If there are no questions, concerns, comments, or recusals, we'll take a motion to approve the bill list.
So moved.
Second.
Barant, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have adoptions of resolutions 1 through 9 by agenda items, by resolution number 326-2025 through 334-2025. I'd like to move them in their entirety. If there are no questions, concerns, or comments or recusals, take a motion to approve those nine.
I just have a question, for 328, the Ad hoc Committee for Fernwood?
Mm-hmm.
Did we decide?
What that is, is we wanted to include liaisons.
Okay.
Like, for example, Roseland Green, a BUDSIT, so we wanted a liaison from there, not to take up a composition member.
Gotcha, okay, because I knew that, I knew we had a certain, I knew we approved, okay.
And if you have someone from the Rec Committee on there also. Any other questions, concerns? If there are none, can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mayor's report, we had a great concert last week, this week we have the Bonfire and Movie coming up. We have Roseland Day coming up, October 4th, should be a great day. With the recreation, we're having the first ever Roseland Cup for the, for the Roseland soccer teams before. Also want to mention the Mayor's Ball, which is going to go to three great nonprofits. The dentist here is one of our sponsors, thank you. The, that, all the money that comes into that is going to go to the Police Foundation, to the Boosters, and to the Historical Society, which all directly benefits everyone in town. So it'd be great to come out to support those. I just want to address one thing that, that Ms. Tremont said about, Mrs. Tremont said about the future of the Police Department. Councilwoman Parati and I have spoke about this, we have a meeting in September. We echo the same sentiments, that there needs to be leadership going forward. I just want to let you know that we're in agreement with you and other people who feel the same way, and we have a meeting, and agenda item number one is the future for leadership in the Police Department.
The meeting is this month, just so you know.
It was supposed to be earlier, but we had a conflict, so it's the 25th.
25th.
That's... Besides that, I have nothing, Councilman Barti couldn't be with us, so Finance Administration, Councilman Trillo or Councilman Schroeder, anything to add?
Nothing for me.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Trillo?
Recreation, soccer's off to a good start, kickball also started, adult kickball started as well. And that's it, looking forward to Friday night, the bonfire, the Roseland, the run for Roseland.
I forgot about that.
And Junior Olympics the following Saturday.
27th, yes.
And then Roseland Day October 4th, so fall is in full swing in, in Roseland.
And don't forget the 27th is the Noecor Car Wash.
I just wrote that down.
My wife would be very upset.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
May I ask, Councilman?
That's all I have.
Councilman Schroeder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, look forward to the Roseland Cup. There's two teams going at it.
And Councilman Trillo felt a little pressure when I told him.
Yeah, so we look forward to it, that's going to be a great, great event. So also just want to welcome and re-welcome and congratulate those appointed to the Municipal Youth Guidance Subcommittee. Look forward to working with you all and meeting some folks that haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. So congratulations and thank you also to the group who, who volunteers in that space and does such great work. Thank you, that's all.
Councilman Barant?
Quick DPW and engineering report. The streets behind Fairchild's Godfrey Lines Gates, Mitchell and Plymouth were paved on Friday and Monday of this week, saw that paving markings were starting to be put down. The Cooper Avenue Water Main Project is still in the works, still in construction. We were told that paving will take place in October, after the trenches have some time to settle. And Lincoln Street, a second speed study is being done after that was repaved to get the after speeds on Lincoln Street with our speed monitor.
Yeah, he put it up yesterday.
Sergeant Hesselberg, and I don't remember the other officers, they were ducked down putting the system in.
Yep, so we'll, we'll have that for a week-long's worth of speed radar, just to can do a before and after.
And water tower too, that's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, water tower, we're getting purchased.
The bid was awarded and they will start the meeting.
So we're, we're putting a second water tower.
Auxiliary.
As redundancy and a backup for when the pressure goes down. We're going to have two water towers there, I'm sure the residents in the neighborhood are going to be inconvenienced for a short amount of time, but when we do lose pressure and we have a backup, they'll feel a lot better when we don't, the whole town doesn't lose water because we're underserved in that capacity, so.
And especially too, when they have to maintain them, according to the DEP.
God forbid when there's, God forbid a fire.
Yes, God forbid, God forbid.
Anything else, Councilman, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Councilwoman Parati?
Okay, you took one of my things, and you did, so, but that's okay. So I'll go with this. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 17th, the Exxon Station at the corner of Eagle Rock and Eisenhower is having a fundraiser for Officer Miller. 20 cents from every gallon of gas sold will go towards Officers Miller's aides, Officer Miller's aide in recovery. So everybody, go fill up your tanks tomorrow, because they're going to start the meter, they're going to calculate it from the morning till at night, and 20 cents from every gallon sold at that Exxon Station will go to Officer Miller. Also, this is way ahead, but Officer Mitesek from the Roseland Police Department has organized an event for Officer Miller, and it's going to be an ice hockey game, which is going to take place on November 21st at the Ice House Arena in Hackensack. I believe puck drop is 7:45, I guess that's when it starts. I believe tickets are $15 at the door, and I'm sure more information will come out about that, but that's, again, another event to try and help to aid in his recovery, and...
Can you update us on the status?
I actually just spoke to his dad a couple days ago, and he is now putting, he's still in therapy, he is now putting weight, he's bearing weight on the leg and the hip of the side that was, that he was hit on. So he's got a lot of positive, a lot of positive things are going forward. He's bearing weight now, he, he's using a crutch instead of a walker, so it's a, it's a progressive, you know, he's progressively getting better, it's just, it's a slow, it's a slow process. So he is, he is getting there, so, he is getting there. As far as our fire department, our truck was ordered. They participated in National Night Out, which was, was a huge success. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Toley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some information about some of our employees, the Beautiful Commission Committee. We've planted some flowers and greenery in, this past weekend by club members. Fall plantings and decorations will be done next week in time for Roseland Day in October. But on another note, we have observed on several occasions that when pet owners are walking their dogs, there have been some observations of dogs urinating in the flower pots, which has killed some plants and also... Yeah, well, that's, it's a big dog, they're big dogs, they're not little dogs, they're bigger dogs, yeah, yeah. Well, some of them are high, these are near the Bond Force, I think, yeah, near Bond Force. And so we're hoping that when pet owners, you know, take their dogs out for a walk, just, just please be mindful of the plants because the, you know, it does affect the dirt and everything, and when we're planting, we wear gloves, but still, you know, we want to keep, keep the dirt and planters clean.[1760.84]